All right. Six o'clock. Welcome to the study session, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. Oh, yeah, today's the weird day where it's all two, 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 two. Um. Let's see. Just do a quick roll call here. Myself, this is Bowser, and attendance at City Hall. We have Brian Williams.
Present.
Wes Argo.
Here.
Doug Stewart.
Present.
Janice Gonzalez.
Here.
Beth Houston.
Here.
Chief Contra.
Here.
Chief Stone.
Here.
Ardel Steel.
Here.
And John Simmons.
Here.
Perfect attendance. Nice job, people. Uh, I do not think there are any additions or corrections to the agenda, so we will move on with the consent agenda. Any questions? It's pretty straightforward to me on the new business item A, Resumption Number Two Thousand and Twenty-Two dash oh-seven, addendum to the task order. Sharon?
So this is for the Splash Park work. Uh, the city had, as you may remember, we did a task order for the cultural resources study a few months back. Um, but our C- which is the funding source, they just notified us in the last couple of weeks that they won't certify that study until we have our sixty percent of our engineering plan done, preliminary engineering. So now we have to get to work on the preliminary engineering, so this task order covers that. And then we can move on with life. I know we still haven't got the agreement with them yet, but they did assure us that everything would be reimbursable, uh, once we put the agreement, got the agreement, put it in place.
That is great news. That is, uh, the hoops that we gotta jump through, and we just as well start jumping through them. Uh, any other questions on that?
Nope.
On item B, Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-Two dash oh-eight, an easement extension on the Van Wick property. Sharon?
So I think we reported on the last couple of meetings, too. I, I know Jamie and I have been working with the Van Wick family. Uh, they have an easement through our Bailey Road property. It's actually on behalf of Granite. Um, but they, they own the property out there, I guess, that Granite is mining on. So anyway, we've, we've been working with them the last couple of months to, uh, extend the, the agreement for them because it's expired. Uh, we extended it for, in five-year increments, for another fifteen years, um, at a five percent accelerator. And then if they chose or needed to, uh, continue that extension after the fifteen years, um, we put a provision in there for that at a ten percent increase.
I think that's a fair shake for the city, so. Uh, any questions?
None.
Negative.
On item C, Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-Two dash oh-nine, uh, Army Dump Station is done. Sharon?
Right, and this is just the usual paperwork we go through once a project has been completed. I know everybody was very excited to get that done, and we're really happy it's gonna be again before the, the spring season comes again. So that project is complete, and this will enable me to get the necessary paperwork to state so we can close it out and get their retention paid to them.
Cool.
Excellent.
Yes, Eric, yeah, Zilla's most popular tourist attraction.
Yeah.
On item D, ordinance number fifteen thirty-seven, some budget amendments. Everybody wanna look over these new packets? Sharon, you maybe wanna go over that?
Sure, um, so this budget amendment includes the supplemental budget requests that were re- reviewed, um, during the budget season. Um, we did, uh, have a carryover balance that we were able to fund all of those. I know the, the Budget Finance Committee met last week to review them again, and, um, they were good with them. A couple other things were added as well. Um, I don't know, do you want me just to go ahead and do it, or just?
Well, you know what, Sharon, could we just go ahead and do, uh, our finance committee meeting now? Would that be okay to do now?
Yeah, I think so.
But let's just go ahead and do that. Brian, you wanna go over what we talked about last week?
Oh, sure, we, um, let me re-combobulate here, make it official. There we go. Uh, with my blurriness, if you have your, uh, addendum with the, uh, finance report together, uh, the only thing that came up, uh, with the, with the dreaded parenthetical, uh, reference on the far right-hand side, uh, line three oh-two, I believe it is, or Fund Three Oh-Two, if you will, uh, the Capital Streets Project Fund. Uh, the balance that's outstanding there, is, is there an adjustment in that, in their packet, Sharon? I have the one we worked from.
It's not, it was, it's in the plus-out packet.
Okay, I just wanted to call out that, uh, that does not represent the, uh, the, uh, being, uh, nearly a million in the red. That just, uh, reflects some fund balance shifting that needs to take place, so it just wasn't done when that report came out. So everything is not as ugly as that might appear initially. Um, if you move on to the next page, the, uh, ending fund balances were all within or am, or beyond where we were. So our carryovers and everything were all right, uh, which put us into a position where, as you see, with the supplemental budget items, in a position to not only fund the budget item, the supplemental budget items, but also, uh, to take care of, is that, uh, that is the rest of the Splash Park. Am I, am I correct there?
Correct.
Yeah, so, uh, we had enough carryover fund balance to take care of Splash Park as well as the requests that we had. Uh, the Zilla PD vehicle, uh, for sixty-five K and the backhoe, which, uh, uh, might seem as large, but I would remind us that in the past where we have bought newer equipment, we have more than made up or at least recovered our costs, um, when we surplus those out and, and other municipalities have bought them from us. So, um, this gets us a backhoe that works, and, uh, if, uh, I think that anybody that's been around town, especially through the winter times, people are very happy with where the direction, or the direction our public works is, uh, is taking. So I think that reflects that and continues our ability to move forward with those services. Uh, the planning staff car was along with that, and the, uh, the, the breathing apparatus replacement for the fire department. Uh, one thing you'll see in the G-one breathing apparatus for Zilla Fire Department, um, that is a separate line from the one below where it says the command vehicle's three eight six thousand. So, um, the, the numbering on that looks a little bit weird. So the command vehicles are eighteen thousand for that. And finally, the HVAC, um, the HVAC over at the Zilla PD, um, the bid was going out when we had our last meeting. We had initial bid from Divco, but we hadn't gone out for bidding as required at the time. Um, the bid was, the Divco came in at twenty-three thousand, um, to replace the HVAC. Uh, we've had meetings over in that building, although it's been like forever, it seems like, at this point, know how lovely it is over there in the summertime. Um, that thing needs to be replaced. It's just, it's just kinda where it is. Um, as a point of reference, my sister just had hers redone in her house, which is considerably smaller than our PD, and she paid like twenty-five thousand for it, so that doesn't seem like to be an unreasonable number. And then the final listing was the gator with the plow. The gator that we are using has a, uh, has a lot of hours on it, and it's, it's coming up time for, for it to, uh, uh, be replaced. And the addition of the plow allows us to, uh, further our snow removal and other debris removal efforts when that comes around. So that wasn't a huge, uh, increase from before, if you will. Other than that, I think we are into our final on, uh, our over-unders. Uh, everything was able to be funded, uh, with our carryovers that are, uh, that are as, uh, within our parameters for carrying over, and, uh, leaves us with, uh, just under eighty-five hundred to transfer, uh, to the contingency reserve fund.
Thank you for that, Brian. Uh, there's a few things I'd like to touch on that you put over there. One was the backhoe. The reason the backhoe's brought up is, in some ways, this is also gonna save the city money, money and time. We wanna get a new backhoe because every two weeks, Public Works has to take a backhoe out to the Bailey property to spread the biosolids. And if we, if we add a new backhoe to our, uh, fleet here, we can take the one that's a piece of junk and take it out there and leave it. John, you wanna explain a little bit what your idea is behind that?
Yeah, thank, yeah, first I want to say thanks for the finance committee coming up with that. It's really nice, um, being put to good use. Out there, it takes us over twenty minutes each way to road the, the backhoe current. It puts a lot of wear and tear on it. We do that, like you said, at least every two weeks. Summertime even more than that. Um, we have a very much dilapidated one that we do utilize just to flip, uh, solids at the sewer plant, which we will then move to out there. We'll take the windows out of it, we'll weld up the battery box, nobody can steal the battery, and we'll come up with a, our own way of being able to start it, so nobody can steal it, even though I don't can imagine anybody wanting to steal it. But anyhow, stranger things have happened, but that will save us a whole lot of time and also wear and tear on our current one that we do use quite a bit. So I think all in all, it's all positive, you know, going in the right direction. And years passed, um, we didn't realize how much we had to actually deal with our biosolids out there until the state came down on us. And since then, for the last three years, we are very diligent. We've gotten kudos for it from the state because we do maintain it. But it is a part, an aspect of it that hadn't really, we hadn't all realized, uh, for the longest time. Now we do take care of it. Uh, Clayton used to go out and pick tomato plants. We can't do that anymore.
So originally, when, uh, John, uh, presented his supplemental budget request, he had put in there a request for sixty thousand dollars to try to find a used backhoe. And he's been looking on the sites, uh, that saw these types of things, but that kinda stuff is just not coming up right now. And I think you guys have heard about all the supply cha-chain stuff. And when we had this finance committee, uh, through one of like the approved sellers that can sell to a government agency, had one Caterpillar backhoe left, and they told us that if, um, the finance committee and council was okay with this, uh, they would hold it for us. Well, they, John called the next day and it's gone. And John, didn't, didn't they tell you it would be eight months or something to possibly get another one? Do you wanna go through them?
Yeah, for that, for that particular one, it's through NC Machinery, and it was a Caterpillar, and, and, and the premise behind that also is that our, our other current newer one is a Caterpillar, and I'd like to keep the same brands if we could. Um, now what he was talking about is we did lose out to somebody else on the last one that they had that was in the whole state. It wasn't just our state, it was in their network, which NC Machinery is in, in Montana, North Dakota, Washington, Oregon, and Alaska. Um, the supply chain is so messed up for those units, they're talking eight to nine months, plus you could definitely not guarantee us a price because nine months from now, of course, the price would be more, you couldn't say how much. Um, so we're kinda shifting gears. Um, I'm looking out through some different vendors, um, getting back some more input today, you know? Um, appreciate that we can't get this passed through, so I have a dollar figure to play with, to, to work with, not play with, but to work with. And, um, now we do have the ability to, you know, pull the trigger as soon as we do get it because even the gator situation, the gator situation, it's out approximately to July to August, even on its own thing. So everything is really backlog, if you can even find something for machinery. That's where we're at.
Okay, awesome, thanks, John. All right, I would like to add a little bit on the HVAC system. Uh, I went over and I looked over that bid, cause, uh, finance committee asked about that when we were doing it, and it is a, it's an air conditioner and a gas furnace, so it is not a heat-up, so.
Hey, Scott, Scott.
Yes.
Hold on one second, cause my husband has a question about the backhoe.
Yeah.
Does someone else contract out, save money in the long run, where someone would come in, where there's not a liability to the, the city, and someone could take care of that business for you, instead of buying another backhoe completely?
You mean, instead of like having the city workers go out there to move the biosolids around?
Yeah, wouldn't that be a little more economic because they're not on the city budget, for one thing? You're not buying another city equipment, and you just, uh, contracted out for probably less amount of money.
Yeah, but the, the reason, the, the, the backhoe situation wouldn't just be for that. We need another backup. The, the, our newest backhoe is old, and so when it breaks down and we don't have one here to, to use in town, and we use it all the time. John, you might explain a little bit more about that.
How many times has it broken down in the past couple of years?
Oh, geez, lots. Um, we, last year, the, we probably had, we did, we did the brakes on the, on the JCB that, I think it went back, they came back before, like five times. Um.
Brakes five times?
Pretty, probably pretty constant. That was like about a, I don't know, I'll, I'll forget. We went through council on it. It's like a six thousand dollar bill. But what, what maybe you don't understand is this, when we talk about the biosolids, that's the one that's gonna go our worst, one that we have currently. The newest model that we are gonna get is being paid through for the streets, and we're putting our second best one at the cemetery because it currently is a JCB that also breaks down quite often, you know, it's not uncommon for it to. Um, I think it's a nineteen eighty, I think it's a nineteen eighty-nine or eighty-eight model, that one. Um, then our newer model is a CAT four sixteen, or four twenty, or the four sixteen. And it was, uh, I think it's a two thousand and four, or, or two thousand and seven. Um, so anyways, this newer model will be used in the streets and in the cemetery, not out there at the biosolids.
It seems that there's a lot of maintenance put on these things, and, um, I don't know who's, who's doing, who's doing the maintenance, but.
We are.
It's like a lot do, going into the maintenance problem, and, uh, they keep going on and on and on. Maybe we need to look into that.
Look into what?
Moving on, so, okay.
Uh, the maintenance program.
Well, I, I believe we do have a maintenance program. Yeah, yeah. So in the last line item here that's in the budget on the Splash Park, so we are still, this would, uh, that would make us whole enough to like, uh, cause we gotta come up with a match to the two hundred and fifty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And we obviously have some of that money set aside to, uh, now, but we're still gonna apply for grants. We're gonna apply it for the Legends Casino grants, and we're gonna still continue to do our fundraisers. So hopefully we won't have to spend all of that money. But, uh, I guess that's it for the.
Scott, Scott. On that HVAC, who is the bid through?
So that was the bid through this, the, the people out of Trade Cities, but it'll, it will have to go out to bid on it.
Oh, it'll have to go out to bid, okay.
It'll have to go out to bid, so, but that was just an estimate of what they, they thought it would cost because the system's toast, and they would, they said they wouldn't even work it. Isn't that what they said, Tim, that they, they couldn't even work on it anymore?
We used to be under a full maintenance program, so anything that broke, they would come in and fix, but I got contacted, and they said they can't do that anymore because it's such an old.
Old unit, okay.
Old unit that, so right now, anything breaks, we're, uh, gonna have to pay for it.
I just, I was just wondering if we had a contractor already set up, because there's one, uh, I highly recommend we don't do business with.
We actually, uh, have to do it on the municipal research rosters.
Okay.
Program, so we'll get, we'll probably get quite a few bids on that. But getting an estimate from Divco gave us a starting point.
Right.
Of, of work.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
So what's the total cost that you think it's gonna cost for the Splash Park?
The total cost we have right now is about five hundred and ten thousand.
And that's everything?
Yes.
Nice deal.
Yeah, the, the catch on that was we only got half of it funded. So we had to come up with funds through fundraisers, and we've done a little bit of stuff with different funding and donations and things like that, too. So there was a certain amount of cash that had to come out of our pocket as well.
Sounds like you're doing an awesome job. Do you have a, a projected date for the whole thing? Cause it sounds like you're doing great, putting the whole thing together.
Do you have a what?
Do you have a projected date for completion? Cause it sounds like you're doing a great job.
We're gonna try and have it done by the end of this year. I believe that's it, isn't it, Ardel?
Uh, yeah, we're, the tentative date is probably before November. So shoot for around Halloween to have it done.
And, and that's all the paperwork and everything, too. And also, we're still dealing with unknowns as far as our, our ability to get some of the products. I mean, we're still, our hands are tied to it, so we are shooting for the date.
All right, on item E, ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight, amending the salary ordinance. Uh, Chief Contra?
Yeah, so I put in a request to, to move up our reserve officers' dollar amounts. So we're, got approved for, I believe it was two dollars, uh, for each step. That'll bring it up to, I think, eighteen fifty and sixteen twenty something for, uh, second class. It was pretty low. They're not even, yeah, just, it needs to be brought up.
Now, you can go ahead and say it, Tim. The way, it was brought up, that they were being pe- paid less than people at McDonald's.
Pretty much.
Yeah, so, and you know, there's a lot of places that don't pay the reserve officers. It's kind of a stepping stone, but we do, and we really appreciate what they're, what they're doing, and it takes some stress off of us, especially when we're, uh, you know, outmanned. Uh, we got men down, um, so, yeah, this just gives a little bump in pay. I think they deserve it.
The other wage that was added to that ordinance, too, um, that got discussed during the budget season was adding the visitor center operator to that as well. We, it's just a very part-time, I think it was twelve hours a week job between April and the end of August, uh, for fifteen dollars an hour, so that's been included in that as well. I've been.
That's awesome, and that's, that brings Chamber back into that. That Chamber's gonna run that, that it's still gonna be a city employee, so. Um, okay, on the visitor response, well, I guess we do have, we got Chamber here, and you guys got anything you'd like to add?
No, Becca stepped away, sorry, it's her husband.
Oh, well, you can say, you want, you got anything?
Um. I don't know, we're working on scholarships funds for the students in the high school. Uh, that's, that's part of my biggest pro- program right here, trying to get more scholarships. I think, uh, one other thing we're trying to work towards, uh, working through Legends is, Legends Casino is, uh, post or after graduation scholarships for medical people who wanna stay in the community, and maybe we can help them out with some of their, uh, costs. That's something that we're trying to put together and, uh, work toward on that, uh, here.
Awesome, okay, thank you for that. Uh, let's see. Uh, I, I don't really got anything, I guess. Let's just go through, let's do some staff reports. We'll start out with, uh, Fire Chief.
Uh, we just got two, um, automatic CPR machines. Uh, one will be in the re- and the second being bored at the PD, and the PD's gonna try to help us out if there is a CPR call. One of the officers are gonna try to get that to us, um, if nobody's taking the rescue rig out and the command vehicles are there. So, but, uh, we just got those in service the other day.
But Chief, you kinda broke up there at the start of that. Are these, are these, uh, defibrillators?
No, they're, they're an axle, um, they're an automatic, uh, chest compression device is what they call. And they do CPR, so you, you, you put them on, and they actually do the CPR, um, and they're automatic, and they're consistent. The batteries will go up to forty-five minutes, so they'll do CPR on a patient for forty-five minutes, and it's all, they're spot-on. It's, uh, not, not much air there, and that relieves, uh, cause right now with our new protocols, I mean, we have to do CPR up to forty-five minutes on scene if we don't bring them back, um, before Dr. Hodges, um, before we can transport. And so we don't have enough manpower to do CPR that long.
Sure.
And you gotta change out every two minutes, so these are the, and, and not just Zilla, um, um, they were out throughout the whole valley, so we put in. I, I believe there was over thirty of them purchased. Wapto got four, Combe's got two, we got two, Granger got one, Sunnyside, Grandview, and then Yakma Five ended up buying, I think, eighteen of them. So, so throughout the whole lower valley, though, everybody will have these machines now to help with the CPR, since the lack of volunteers.
And you said that, uh, one, one's gonna be in the PD, and then where's the other one gonna be?
It's in the rescue vehicle, the one that goes, but, you know, it's without the volunteer, sometimes it's hard to get that vehicle going. So we've worked, uh, Tim and I have been working with the officers, and whoever's on duty, they see a call that, uh, possible CPR in progress, they're gonna grab it because they don't have access to the fire station, and so they'll grab it and bring it to us. In fact, we're gonna train them on it next, uh, next month, too, so if something happens, that, they'll be trained also.
Awesome, okay. Uh, Police Chief?
Uh, everything's going pretty good. Uh, we got Mr. Williams back. He's out on the road.
Nice.
Which will help. Um, I think Officer Gay is due for his first surgery this Friday. So I, I, I don't know what his status is gonna be for the rest of the year, but other than that, we got another one coming out in May from the academy, and things are going pretty good.
Excellent, we're achieved, yeah. Looks like, yeah, we have some turnover coming up. Uh, what's doing Public Works?
I asked you a question, uh, Chief. This is Janice.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, can you give us some feedback on the, the, um, like, some of the, uh, countywide efforts that are going on that YV cog is operating or, or proposing to take the lead in with regard to, uh, uh, crime analysis, SWAT? You, what, can you tell me what kinds of information was shared at your chief's meeting?
I, uh, I met with the, the two gals individually, so they've been going up, up and down the meeting with, uh, different chiefs, and I gave them my input of what I thought was wrong, and it sounds like most of us are saying the exact same thing as bodies and, and dollar amounts, but they're looking to, to hire somebody to, to do the crime analysis that would, I guess it'd be under their control, and see, it was crime analysis and, uh.
Forensic.
Yeah, forensic, uh, for like shooting.
Analysis of bullet.
Yeah, bullets and stuff, so, but other than that, you know, with some.
Are you good with that, though?
I am, so, but, right now, we have to send ours off to, to, uh, WSP, which could take a while. And as far as crime analysis, we kinda just use Spillman, and we, we're, we're not, it's not like the old days where I had to do a pin map on the wall, you know, of all where burglaries were and deaths were, so this'll help out a lot.
Yeah, okay, thank, thank you for that, Chief. Uh, how about planning?
Planning, building, and code enforcement is kinda busy. Uh, we'll be doing interview tomorrow for the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer. Um, and I'm still dealing with all the open-ended projects right now. Um, there are some that are coming to a, a close, but we also have quite a few that have just opened. Mainly room additions and. Mainly room additions and, um, fire damage cleanup and remodel. It's also grant season, so I've started writing the WCA grant mitigation for that. Uh, there's going to be bike and pedestrian grants from, uh, Washington State DOT coming out here shortly, um. Yeah, also, uh, RCO is running, uh, the grant process again, um. They blame all of the, the backlogs right now on, uh, National Park Service not kicking out the money from the last. So, this season, they're, they're trying to work out all the kinks, but they have opened it up for, for other park, um, grant opportunities. Exploring that.
That's awesome, thank you Ardell, those grants are huge to small towns like us, we all know that, so yeah, keep at it.
Hey Scott, Scott, can I ask a question? Sorry, um, what are the open-ended projects that Arlene is talking about? Ardell, sorry.
Uh, sorry, say that again?
Can you tell us what the open-ended projects are?
Sure. Uh, the big, the biggest one of all is, uh, Zilla Lakes, they're currently working on putting together their phase two, uh, final plat. And part of that is not just the, um, the surveying of, of the property, but it's also putting together their covenants and their CCNRs. Um, and so reviewing that, trying to make sure that they stay on, on task there. Uh, I've also got, uh, I'm working with Cliff Sainsbury, his project for the four, uh, triplexes, that's right next to Carzilla, uh, that's coming along, um. It's a little slow going, I actually thought they'd be further along than they are right now, but they're doing kind of a piecemeal thing where depending on what the wood prices are, that's when they buy enough to, to take care of at least one, if not two, of the buildings and kind of move on from there, so. We're, we're kind of working on that, I just closed out another project that was a two-year operation, that was, uh, a room addition one, but we just picked up another room addition. Uh, and this one is, uh, they're redoing the master, or, yeah, the master bedroom area, so they're blowing out a wall, uh, and then uh, adding in a, a new bathroom, et cetera. Um, and then we have two fire damage, uh, places that I've been working with. Uh, one that's down on First Ave and the other one that's over on Fifth.
Thank you again for that.
What?
Sorry.
Okay, Sharon, would you like to add anything?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, all right, let's move on to City Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll do a quick roll call here, myself and Mrs. Bouncer are in attendance at City Hall, we have Brian Williams.
Present.
Wes Argo.
Here.
Doug Stewart.
Present.
Janice Gonzalez.
Here.
Beth Houston.
Here.
Chief Quantrill.
Here.
Chief Stonebass.
Here.
Ardell Steele.
Here.
and Johnsons.
Here.
All right, welcome to the City Council meeting, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Uh, there are no additions or corrections to the agenda, could I have the consent agenda?
I move that the City Council approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second.
That motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion on the matter? With that, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Onto new business, item A, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, an addendum to a task order.
Will the City Council approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, approving addendum number one to task order number twenty twenty-one dash zero five with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated for engineering services for the plat, splash park facility.
I'll second the motion.
That motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing that, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 On item E, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, an easement extension.
Uh, this is Janice, I move City Council approve resolution number twenty twenty-two oh eight, approving a temporary easement extension agreement with the Van Wikes.
I second.
That motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 On item C, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, dump station.
I move the City Council approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, accepting the RV dump station repair project as complete.
I'll second.
Thank you for that, that motion has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on the matter?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 On item D, uh, ordinance number fifteen thirty-seven, budget amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I move the City Council approve ordinance number fifteen thirty-seven, approving twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
I'll second that.
Thank you for that, that motion has been made in second, yeah, is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing that, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Item E, ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight, amending the salary ordinance.
I move the City Council approve ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight, amend it, amending ordinance number fifteen nineteen, setting wages.
I'll say that.
That motion has been made in second, yeah, is there any further discussion on this matter?
No.
Not hearing any, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome, yeah. Uh, I think we kind of wrapped everything up, then, uh, anybody else like to add anything?
Yes, this is Janice, I have a committee report, actually two, um. So I, I'll, I'll start with, uh, um, YV cog. I was re-elected to the executive board and I did have competition this time, woo.
Wow.
So, but I'm, so I am still on the executive board of the YV cog and I'm still representing in the general, general membership, but in the executive cog, I represent other small cities, not just Zilla, on the, on the executive committee. So, the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, that, um, I also attended a home meeting today, I represent the city on the home board. And, uh, Ardell, Ardell, do you want to tell them or should I? Ardell. Huh? Ardell.
Go for it.
Okay, Ardell volunteered, uh, the city to, um, host a meeting sometime in March. And I believe it will be of the home board, which is largely elected officials, not always, but all, but largely elected officials, and the TAC committee related to the home board. And so they want to have a, uh, get-together meeting.
Like, like, like an in-person meeting, like in the civic center?
Yeah, I, well, I don't know, Ardell, where.
That's kind, that's kind of the idea, was to have a face-to-face and get both the, the executive board and the TAC together so that we could work out everything and be on the same page. But, we're also being very conscious of what the, uh, in-person mask rules are gonna be and trying to set things up accordingly. Some people may not want to do it, so we're also trying to set it up in a location where we can actually have Zoom, uh, call in as well.
Okay, good.
If, I mean, the, the writing kind of seems on the wall that the mask mandate's gonna be dropped, like, here, coming, like, end of March, right? Why don't you just plant it for, around it towards the end of March?
They usually, the TAC usually meets right around the time of, um, the third Tuesday of the month. I'm not sure where that falls in, in this cycle, if it's the, before or after the, the lifting.
I thought it was.
I haven't looked at that.
May eighteenth, wasn't it? Isn't it, I mean.
March.
March eighteenth?
March twenty-first is when the li, the mask ban is supposed to.
Okay, so what we were also discussing was having it coincide with the same day that we have our home board meeting, which is the twenty-second. And that would kind of at least resolve that, I, I recognize that some people still may want to wear masks, which is fine if they come in person, but it, they, they won't be mandated to, so.
I think that's, uh, sounds like a fabulous idea, Janice, that could be two, two birds with one stone too.
So if, if you want to push that Sharon, cause they, we, Sharon, Ardell, cause we were, we, that, we were kind of discussing that today in the meeting, but, you know, if your, your group is supportive of that, that would be, you know.
I don't think we'll have an issue with it, most of us are, are pretty okay with either calling in or, or showing up with a mask or something to that effect.
Okay.
Two or, or so that would show up without a mask. Um, but Brian's supposed to get me numbers on who's actually going to be in person versus how many we need to accommodate for the tech side of it.
Okay, cause he didn't, wasn't real clear on that, he was just asking, would you be willing to show up? And it's like, well, that, the option of, um, that, the, uh, virtual wasn't really discussed, so that's good to know. So more people might attend if it's, if there's a virtual option. That's it.
Thank you for that, Janice, yeah. I got something to add, so we're having this meeting on Tuesday because yesterday was President's Day. And I had been working my other job, uh, yesterday, so I thought it'd be fun to take a, a poll of people that I saw and find out who their fri, favorite president was. So I'm gonna read off the results that I got yesterday. Kennedy, Obama, Trump, Obama, Reagan, Washington. A lady that couldn't name a president, but she said not the current one. Washington, Obama, Obama, Lincoln, Trump, Trump. So Obama actually won the, uh, my informal poll in Zilla yesterday.
Wow.
That being said, I don't, uh, have anything else unless anybody else would like to add anything. If not, I will see you ladies and gentlemen in a couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.